We're going to call the meeting to order. Good evening. Welcome to our third annual, our third special town meeting done virtually. We picked up much better last time. Everyone's getting the hang of it. We're doing much better with the tech support side of it. They have less and less to do each night. And we've refined a few things as we went, as Adam was saying. One of the issues we found out was when I would announce his voting, everybody would pop over to the voting portal and hit refresh page at the same time. And that just sort of overloaded the system. So we're going to take a little slower approach at jumping from Zoom to the voting portal. If everyone can just take a cue from me when to jump over. And then that should keep everybody on. We're also looking for a backside technical fix on that. And we're going to see if that works this time around or next time we have a meeting. Our voting, all of our verbal voting is going to be done off screen because a few folks thought that that might be influencing people's votes if they heard how someone else was voting. So we're handling that on the backend. We won't be announcing those votes live anymore, but they will be showing up in the voting records. And there was one other thing I was supposed to mention, but I forgot what it was. And I left my notes at the office. That's part of the problem, doing this from home. All right, I'm assuming there are no more town meeting members that have to be sworn in. If any of them are, please give us a quick raise hand in the Zoom. If you could turn that on for one second, Julie, let's see if anyone raises their hand. They're not sworn in, but everybody really should be at this point. We have one. Mr. Rudeman, have you not been sworn in?
I was not aware of that.
You raised your hand.
I have.
Yeah, I'll put it down for you and we'll pretend you didn't do it. There you go. All righty, so everybody's raising hand. So I recognize the Chair of the Board of Selectment, John V. Hurd, the Select Board. Mr. Hurd.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Hurd, Select Board Chair. It is moved that if all the business of the meeting as set forth in the warrant for the special town meeting is not disposed of at this session, when the meeting adjourns, it adjourns to Monday, November 30th, 2020 at 8:00 PM. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. Mr. Foskett, would you like a second?
Second.
Second, okay, I'm gonna, so we're gonna take Wednesday off because it's a day before Thanksgiving, everyone. We're going to come back next Monday if we don't finish up tonight. So I'm going to direct the clerk to enter one vote in favor of that motion. And I will now call if there are any announcements or resolutions. Anyone has an announcement or resolution? I guess the raise hand feature is still open?
Now it is.
Now it is, okay. Raise your hand if you have an announcement or resolution. Mr. DeCoursey.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve DeCoursey, Precinct 2, and a member of the Select Board. This past Saturday, the Summerville Homeless Coalition organized a cleanup of the homeless encampment in the Mute Bar Woods. There were 25 volunteers who participated in the cleanup, which resulted in the removal of two dumpsters full of trash. I want to acknowledge Mike Libby, Hannah O'Halloran, and other members of the homeless coalition for organizing the cleanup. Chief Flaherty, Captain Flynn, and Officer Kniff of the Arlington Police Department for their participation, and to Officer Kniff in particular for his ongoing work at the site as part of the multi-disciplinary homeless outreach team. I also want to thank numerous residents for their volunteerism, and a special thank you to Congressman Joe Kennedy for his help and support. Through the cleanup, a significant step was taken to make the area safer for the homeless population and those members of the homeless outreach team who provide services on site. The cleanup also helped to provide insight as to how the town and the homeless coalition can continue to provide critical services with the goal of securing permanent housing for homeless individuals while also balancing neighborhood concerns. Finally, it demonstrated the clear need to seek the property owner's participation in future cleanup efforts. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Corsi. If we were in Town Hall, everybody would clap for you right now. It's not going to happen here. Anyone else have an announcement or resolution? Okay, seeing none. I'm going to recall for any reports of committees. Does anyone have a report of a committee or board that we haven't received already? Again, if they do, please use the raise hand feature. Ms. Bloom has put a point of order up. Ms. Bloom, let's ask Nancy, what's her point of order? It's a little unusual this early in the meeting, but Ms. Bloom, what's your point of order?
Nancy Bloom, Precinct 18. I was just wondering, someone mentioned a couple of meetings back that perhaps we should start half an hour earlier.
Yeah, that can't happen. I'll tell you why, Nancy. This team logs on at 7 o'clock and we start checking in everybody else by 7:15, 7:30, and it takes us till 8 o'clock almost. So to get it to start earlier would push all of our dinners right off the page. We entertained that out, but we'd have to actually reschedule everything on our, our side of the screen here.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Ms. Bloom. Okay, seeing no resolutions, announcements, or any reports of committees. We haven't taken one, Article 1, off the table, so we don't have to. Mr. Foskett, can you take Article 4 off the table, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the recommended votes contained in the respective reports of the Finance Committee, Select Board, Redevelopment Board, and other committees be before the meeting without further motion.
Thank you, sir. We'll direct the clerk.
Article 4, the Bylaw Amendment, Bike Way Hours be taken off the table.
Okay.
I need a second.
Ms. Brazil can second that for us.
Sorry, Julie Brazil, Precinct 12, second.
Okay, thank you. We have 229 members logged in already. Very good. All right, so we have Article 4 is off the table. We have received, I have one question of Mr. Hurd. Mr. Hurd, did the Select Board discuss Article 4 in their meeting this evening? And did they have a change of their vote?
We did have a meeting this evening, Mr. Moderator.
Did you discuss this Article 4 at all?
We did not.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Patty was there, then she went away. There, she's back.
Oh, okay.
I'm Ms. Muldoon.
You can hear me now.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Patricia Muldoon, Precinct 20. I have submitted a substitute motion that in the legalese language basically would eliminate restrictions on the Minuteman Bike Way hours. And the reason I am proposing that, I will say that I have ridden the bike path after night has fallen, late into the night, with my helmet light on. And I had no idea I was breaking the law. Who knew? It really should be changed to allow all of us to be able to use the bike path. In, it is a transportation quarter corridor. So it's something that we should all be able to use as needed. As I understand it, it is rarely if ever enforced, but certainly unevenly enforced by the police. And they have other tools in their toolkit if there are any problems that arise. This one keeps us out of step, as it is currently written, keeps us out of step with our Minuteman neighbors who do not have any curfew or limit on their bike hours. So it is a source of transportation. It should be open just as roads are open. It would help a little bit in meeting our sustainability goals because we want to encourage people to walk and bike rather than using fossil fuel cars. And it would improve, I think, the fairness and justice efforts that we are all undertaking, that it's not be something that is only very occasionally enforced with some people and the rest of us don't even know that it is a law. So I think in, for fairness and to make us more compatible with our neighbors and hopefully more sustainable, I propose that we align with our neighbors and eliminate any curfew hours for the bike path. And I will mention that I have spoken with a couple of members of the Bicycle Advisory Committee, and they have, they tell me they've wanted to accomplish this for years. So I think it is about time that we change our largely unknown law and make us compatible with our neighbors. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Ms. Muldoon. Mr. Foskett, can we second Ms. Muldoon's?
A second, yes.
Okay, seconded, thank you very much. All right. As you may have noticed, we fixed the issue with the clock. We had a glitch when Adam would flick away from the waiting to speak screen and go to the screen showing us the warrant article and the proposed votes, et cetera. The clock would glitch. It's been fixed, so now it actually shows the time that it's supposed to show. I think Ms. Bloom's point of order is done, so the next person would be Adam McNeil.
Hello, Adam McNeil, Precinct 4. Okay, so, great, good. I know you said not to ask if you could hear me, but I didn't know it wasn't to feedback. All right, um, so I am the citizen sponsor of this article, the original warrant article, which did not have either the Select Board specific language or obviously Ms. Muldoon's specific language, although it is, it was written as a generic article on purpose for those purposes. So I can give a little bit of brief history about this, the article, and then also my personal opinions on Ms. Muldoon's substitute motion, although I can't speak for the committee on the substitute motion because we have not taken a vote on that, although obviously we took a vote of support of the genericized warrant article language. So the Minuteman Bike Way is obviously a pretty heavily used thoroughfare, both for, obviously for cycling, but obviously for walking, running. I think one of the most frequent accidental violations of the current curfew is people walking their dogs. That is especially true in 2019. I'm not sure if 2020's general change in everyone's behavior has massively affected that, but that's neither here nor there, I guess, suppose for going forward. Ideally, we'd be back to good conditions. But it's definitely very heavily used, and it's very heavily used outside of the curfew hours, as are currently stated, especially in the summer, but even in the winter. And a lot of people are accidentally violating the law. So the original goal of this warrant article was to do two things. One was to align the law with the actual usage, so that people were not accidentally violating the law. And the other was to kind of just clean up some areas of possible inconsistency. I'd say the police were quite willing to talk with me about this. We came to a pretty good hammering out of their opinions on what they use the current curfew for. And I was very pleased to get their support on the warrant article and the genericized language there. Yeah, so that's, that, Ms. Muldoon went into pretty great detail, listing of a lot of the reasons why this makes a lot of sense, even outside of the fact that the law is relatively inconsistently enforced it and a stretch really of resources. But, oh shoot, where was I going with that? My apologies, I just kind of lost my train of thought. Oh, yes. So as to what I was talking about, Ms. Muldoon's motion as opposed to the Select Board's motion, I think it makes a lot of sense, actually. I did not talk to Ms. Muldoon prior to her filing this motion, and I was actually rather surprised by it. But honestly, I believe alignment with our neighboring communities, so we don't have, you know, you trigger when you cross the border, which now isn't super clearly defined on the bike way, is ultimately the goal anyway, to make things consistent, to make things clear, understandable, and to align with usage that's really, for the most part, not really causing any issues, such like noise violations, if there's any serious issues on the bike way are already covered under their respective laws. The Bike Way hours don't really make sense as a park. It's not used really as a park, except for that possible exception to dog walking that I mentioned earlier. It's a commuting path. It's safer for bikers and walkers to be on the bike way than it is to be on the road, for the most part, especially the section by AirLife that's heavily lit and heavily used. So on a personal note, I support Ms. Muldoon's substitute motion, but I hope that either way, whether the substitute motion passes or not, we can work towards extending it with the original if it doesn't. So that's my preference order, Ms. Muldoon's motion, and then a passing as the compromise of the Select Boards. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McNeil. Ms. Brazil, as a town meeting member?
Yes. Julie Brazil, Precinct 12. I, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with the amendment. I'm very open to, to the idea of, of reducing the restrictions on the bike path and aligning ourselves with the surrounding communities. I, that makes sense to me, but I am concerned that we aren't following a good process here. The abutters had no notice that this was being discussed. There hasn't been a conversation, if people have concerns, that we, 250 people haven't thought of. I just, I'm concerned that we, it's, it's not, it's not what we said when we mailed the warrant to people and put it up online. And just sort of, secondarily, it's, I feel like we haven't quite learned the lesson from Article 3. Amendments from the floor with that sort of substantively change things, I think, can be dangerous, and we have to come back in a year and fix them. And so I won't be supporting the amendment, but I'm very happy to support Article 4 and then encourage citizens or the relevant committees to propose, to propose a more complete solution for April. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brazil. And I, I do personally find that the amendment is within the scope of the warrant article, which was to extend the operating hours. Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Brazil.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Phil Goff, Precinct 7. I had originally supported Article 4, as I thought, giving the town manager flexibility to add some additional hours onto the bike way made a lot of sense. But I was enthused, and actually, I rise in support of the substitute motion as well, as I think that, as Ms. Muldoon mentioned and Adam spoke to as well, I think it just makes sense as a transportation facility that it be open 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I think in 1992, when the, when the Minuteman was developed, you know, my sense is it was probably thought more as a recreational facility as, as a lot of rail trails and the Charles River Basin Trail System was really thought of more for recreation. But I think that's really, that's changed, that's evolved in the 28 years that the Minuteman Bike Way has been open in Arlington. Certainly, the demand created by AirLife Station is a big part of that. We know that a huge number of the people who are actually using the Bike Way are in fact commuters, as the town and the Regional Planning Agency has, and East Arlington municipal streets has done counts over the years on the Minuteman. The biggest bikes are definitely, obviously, in East Arlington as well, are in the morning and PM. So people are using it for commuting in both morning and the evening. And I think having the Minuteman open for people who are coming home later at night from work or maybe they're out is not only fair for people who are traveling on foot or by bike or scooter, maybe, as those are becoming more popular, but I also think it's very consistent with the master plan's goals of promoting sustainable transportation as well. So I think, just, you know, imagine if it was decided that, you know, Gray Street at 9:00 PM would be closed through traffic and everyone had to use Mass App instead when they're coming home late, or vice versa, Mass App closed at 9:00 PM, wouldn't really make any sense. I think the Bike Way should really be treated the same way as a, you know, really critical transportation corridor for the town of Arlington. I like the fact that it also would allow us to be consistent and have similar policies to Lexington and Bedford. So someone who is taking perhaps a longer trip at night doesn't have to think about or worry about which town they're in and whether it's legal or illegal for them to be in that particular place at that particular time. So I do encourage all town meeting members to support the substitute motion, and hopefully the Minuteman path one day will be available for anyone to use 24 hours a day for transportation or recreation. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Goff.
He can't hear you.
You can speak, Mr. Warden.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, fellow town meeting members. When the legislature authorized-
Name of precinct?
John Warden, Precinct 8. When the legislature authorized representative town meetings back in the 20s, we were one of the very early towns to do it. They specifically provided that any, any registered voter had a right to address the meeting. All he had to do, he or she had to do was be introduced by a town, town meeting member or town official.
Is that within the scope of the article, Mr. Warden?
Well, if you let me give my remarks, it will be.
Okay.
I received today a message from a longtime friend, former member of the school committee and a former town meeting member, and I would like to read his letter to the meeting.
Go ahead.
The substitute motion for Article, it's Article 4, isn't it? You got the wrong number here. The special town meeting submitted by Patricia Muldoon leaves residents and businesses along the Bike Way in a, I'm sorry, this is, the light's terrible. As victims of neighborhood of night gatherings. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Mrs. Warden to read this.
Can you also tell us whose letter this is?
Oh, yes, it's George Buckley, who lives in Renfrew Street.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Patricia Warden, Precinct 8. The substitute motion for Article 8 of the special town meeting submitted by Patricia Muldoon leaves residents and businesses about the Minuteman Bike Way as victims of late-night gatherings, ruckus, and shenanigans. The police department needs to be able to order non-commuting people to leave the Bike Way in the late evening hours. It should therefore have hours of use set by the town manager in concert with the Select Board. The Bike Way west of Arlington, for the most part, abuts much less dense development than in Arlington. Please oppose and vote no action on Ms. Muldoon's substitute motion and any similar proposals that leave the area without regulation. Sincerely, George Buckley of Renfrew Street. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mrs. Warden. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Roderick Holland, Precinct 7. I originally supported the Adam McNeil Select Board Article 4, really on the grounds that it was a step in the direction of the situation proposed by the substitute motion. On reflection, I think that the substitute motion is a very, very good idea, and I rise to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holland. Elizabeth Dre.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Elizabeth Dre, Precinct 8. I'd like to offer to my fellow town meeting members this thought that a bylaw that is not consistently enforced is open to be selectively enforced and may lead to the risk of inequitable enforcement. If we are not currently consistently enforcing this bylaw, then we do not need it. And I would ask you to vote in favor of the amendment and remove the hours. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Ms. Dre.
And to speak-
Mr. Christiana, can you name a precinct, please?
Yes, Greg Christiana, Precinct 15. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, is it possible for Police Chief Flaherty or someone from the Police Department to speak to any concerns that they have with this substitute motion as far as, like, security, safety issues along the bike path?
Is that in the form of a question you have for Chief Flaherty that you'd like to find out her opinions of those issues?
That's correct, Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Chief Flaherty, can you tell us what your opinions are?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Police Flaherty. So historically, the Police Department hasn't enforced these hours. We would typically advise people when we come across them about the restrictions, specifically if we receive calls regarding some type of suspicious condition or suspicious behavior or some type of illegal activity. And we've always kind of approached it, not necessarily with the enforcement mindset, but as a community safety, crime reduction, and public order matter. With that said, I took a look back to 2017 at the calls that we've received after 9:00 PM on the bike path from the Cambridge Line to the Lexington Line. And we've had very few calls for our noise complaints in youths gathering. Years back, it was an issue that we would have people gathering along the bike path, but we don't really seem to have those, those issues anymore. And the Police Department has no issue with the article or substitute motion.
Okay, thank you, Police Chief Flaherty. So I have the same procedural concerns that Ms. Brazil voiced earlier. So I have the same procedural concerns that Ms. Brazil voiced earlier. But I think what overrides that for me is that empirically speaking, like, like, it sounds like based on what the police chief is saying, reporting, this has not been an issue lately. And if it is, and as Ms. Dre said, if it's not being enforced, there's also the concern that it may not be enforced equally for all residents or passers through, which could be a vector for introducing bias, for instance. And so for all those reasons, I, I'd say I stand in favor of the substitute motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Christiana. Gregory, excuse me, Robert Marlin. Michelle DeRosa has a point of order. Ms. DeRosa, what's your point of order?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My, my question is one of reconciling the substitute motion with the language of the original article. Would the elimination of bike way hours be within scope for the language of the original article if the town manager decided that that was the move he wanted to make?
Well, the language, I find the language is within the scope of the warrant article. It's not the recommended vote of the Board of Selectment that determines scope. It's the warrant article itself, which basically boiled down to, to extend the operating hours of the Minuteman Bike Way. So I guess by, under my view of it, by eliminating the hours, we are just extending them to 24/7 as opposed to some more finite set of hours. So I did find it within scope of the original warrant article.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, we'll go back to Mr. Robert Marlin.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Rob Marlin, Precinct 3. I move to end debate on the substitute motion and the article.
Okay, Mr. Marlin has made a motion to terminate debate on the article and all other matters before, which would include the substitute motion.
Second.
Mr. Foskett has seconded that. So first, we're going to take a motion, vote to terminate debate. Now, don't just jump right over to the voting screen yet. Let's let Adam work through. And once we see the vote screen, the voting page now, if everybody could mosey over there, not all at once. So maybe precincts 1 through 7, a couple seconds later, 8 through 14, five, six seconds after that, the rest of the town meeting members, 7 through 21, jump over. So that should eliminate all of our problems with people getting bopped off the system. If you can just please open the Zoom hands, the Zoom if someone's, excuse me, the raised hand feature on Zoom if someone's having a voting issue, please use the raised hand. Otherwise, please use 1 for yes or 2 for no, and then cast your vote. This is on the motion to terminate debate on the article and all matters before it. We have 199 members have voted. We have 43 not. Those 43 could jump on over to the voting portal and please vote 1 for yes, 2 for no, and then click Cast Your Vote.
Mr. Moderator, Adele Kraus has her hand raised.
Okay, so Ms. Kraus, if, let's see what you have to say, but don't announce your vote over the hair. Just tell us what the issue is, Ms. Kraus. Okay, Ms. Kraus, we've got your vote and we have recorded it. Thank you. Okay, for the last 10 folks, we're going to give you about 15 seconds. Mike Ruderman, Beth Malofcak, Joanne Preston, Ian Thomas, Elizabeth Exton, Timur Yontar, Sherry Barron, Larry Slotnick, and then Mary Dyce. And we're going to give you another five seconds, then we're going to terminate voting. Okay, let's terminate voting, Mr. Korolsky. Okay, motion to terminate debate carries by 92%. We have 217 of the affirmative, 19 in the negative. It's a vote, and I so declare it, debate is terminated. Soon as we run through the screens, we're going to take a vote first on Ms. Muldoon's substitute motion. So Ms. Muldoon has submitted the substitute motion, which was circulated to everybody early this morning. And basically, Ms. Muldoon wants to eliminate the bike way hours in their entirety. So it looks like we have one more screen to go. Now, can I have to invent one, Adam? So what Mr. Korolsky is doing is getting us an agenda item for the system. You can see the backend work. Ms. Muldoon has a point of order, Ms. Wayman. If you can bring her up, let's find out what her point of order while Adam does his thing.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to, oh, sorry, Patricia Muldoon, Precinct 20. I just wanted to clarify, I didn't want to eliminate the hours. I want to eliminate the restriction on hours, which I'm sure everybody got, but.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So we just heard what Ms. Muldoon's substitute would do. So we're going to submit that and enable voting. Okay, now we can see the vote screens, so everybody can stagger your way over to the voting portal. Look, he has a database issue. So precincts 1 through 7, a couple seconds later, 8 through 14, a little bit after that, 14 through 21. We have the reasience feature up. If you have an issue voting, please choose 1. If you want Ms. Muldoon's substitute, choose 2 if you do not want it. And then hit Cast Your Vote. So let's go ahead and get voting. We've got 177 have already voted, down to 65. So here's Ms. Muldoon's substitute motion in front of you. Okay, about 10 folks left who have not voted. If you'll please go ahead and vote now. Beth Ann Friedman, Susan Stamps, Elizabeth Exton, Adam Patcher, Mary Dyce, Brian Rarig, Pam Hallett. We're voting on Ms. Muldoon's substitute motion. So we're going to keep that open for about five more seconds. Three people, Elizabeth Exton and Pam Hallett, voting if we want to use Ms. Muldoon's substitute. Okay, let's close voting.
Mr. Moderator, we're just waiting on entry of one verbal vote. Okay?
Okay. Oh, I see. Okay, Ms. Muldoon's substitute motion passes 88%. We have 211 in the positive, 29 in the negative. And it's a vote, and I so declare it, and that is our main motion. Soon as we run through the screens, we'll take that final vote. And Serena, up, she took it down. Serena Memmon has a point of order, Ms. Wayman. Ms. Memmon?
Serena Memmon, Precinct 21. Mr. Moderator, I just want to make sure from what I read in the substitute motion, even though it's passed, that there was no $20 fine or no fine listed. Correct?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. So as soon as we're done clearing that out, I think Ms. Muldoon has made hers. We're going to take a vote on the main motion as substituted by Ms. Muldoon's substitute motion. So we have substituted, now we have to vote and make it the main motion. So we're voting to make Ms. Muldoon's the bylaw. Okay, so please, town meeting members, please go back to the portal page in the same groupings, 1 through 7, wait a little bit, 7, 8 through 14, wait a little bit, and then 15 through 21. Then please choose 1 for yes and 2 for no, and then click Cast Your Vote. If you have a voting issue, please let us know by using the raise hand feature or calling Ms. Brazil. I should have given you her phone number earlier. If you have a voting issue and want to report a vote, call 781-316-3071. So Ms. Stamps has a point of order.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Susan Stamps, Precinct 3. I don't know exactly what we're voting on now on Article 4 because that's all about setting hours, and I think we just voted to eliminate hours, so I'm not.
That's right. So first, we had to vote on whether or not we wanted to substitute Ms. Muldoon's substitute motion for the recommended vote of the Board of Select Board. We voted yes, and now we have to take a vote on this Select Board's recommended vote as substituted.
Oh, okay, I see. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So if everybody could go ahead and vote, 1 for yes, 2 for no, and then click Cast Your Vote. And there are about 10 folks who have not voted yet. Down to 7, Larry Slotnick, Karen Kelleher, Leah Broder, Lisa Blenkisbor, Diane Mahan. Lisa and Diane have not voted. We're going to give them another 30, 20 seconds. Okay, everybody has now voted, so let's close voting. Motion carries by 94%. We have 228 in the affirmative, 14 in the negative. It's a vote, and I so declare it. And that ends Article 4. And the next, that will bring us to Article 9 as soon as we get through the screens. Okay. Is Ms. Stamps left over from the last time? Or did she raise her hand again? Stamps, you have another point of order?
Oh, no, you're on, no, sir, I did not.
I haven't been elevated that high yet, Susan. Thank you very much. We have the recommended vote of the Election Modernization Committee. Does anyone on that committee wish to speak to it? So it's Article 9. Okay, Mr. Levy?
Hi, David Levy, Precinct 18. Motion to move the question and terminate debate.
Okay.
Second.
We have motion to terminate debate on Article 9. And it's been seconded. So a motion to terminate debate on Article 9, vote to election modernization committee. Basically, extend the life of the committee and make everyone voting members. So we're going to take a vote to terminate debate on that. Thomas Michaelman has a point of order. So go ahead, town meeting members, navigate over to the voting portal and go ahead and cast your vote on the motion to terminate debate. 1 for yes, to terminate, 2 to no, and then hit Cast Your Vote. Mr. Michaelman?
I was just curious, since we had no debate, how we could.
I was just curious, since we had no debate, how we can terminate the debate?
Because Mr. Levy decided to ask for it. And now we're gonna see if we want to it, or we're gonna continue to have debate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Barron? Ms. Barron?
Yes, Sherry Barron, Precinct Seven. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can, ma'am.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Don't worry.
I had this, Sherry Barron, Precinct Seven, I had the same question. I don't ever recall that we terminated debate when there was no debate, so I'm just thinking that might be an unnecessary step.
I think so.
That's all, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have thirty-nine people haven't voted yet, please go ahead and try and do so now. And Mr. O'Connor has a point of order. Mr. O'Connor?
I am here, James O'Connor, Chair of the Election Modernization Committee. I just wish to clarify that the vote was to change our name from Study Committee to the Election Modernization Committee, to increase the size to fifteen, to, as you mentioned, the, to extend the voting status, extend the life to twenty-twenty-two, it was all four parts.
Okay, thank you, but technically not a point of order, but I'm gonna, nothing. Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, last few people who have not voted yet, please go ahead and do so right now. It's the terminate debate on Article Nine. Adam Precher, Adam McNeil, Samantha Dutra, Elizabeth Exton, Len Carden. You got five people, gonna give you fifteen seconds, go ahead and vote on terminating debate. And debate is, voting is terminated. Please close voting, Mr. Korowski. Debate is terminated, it's eighty-three percent in the affirmative. Hundred ninety-five in the affirmative and thirty-nine in the negative. That will bring us to the vote itself. So what we will be voting for is Mr. O'Connor so kindly told us in his, that we're doing a number of different things here, extending the life of the committee, changing its name, changing its membership role a little bit, and going forward in that manner. So we're gonna now take a main, a vote on Nine. Which had originally been on our consent agenda, but we took it off. So there's our voting screen. So please navigate over to the portal, take your moment to get there, and when you are there, please choose one for yes and two for no, if you want to do the things listed in the discussion in front of you. And go ahead and update the Election Modernization Committee as, please vote one for yes. If you don't want to, vote two for no, and then hit cast your vote. Okay, we're down to about eight people who haven't voted yet. Susan Weber, Dave Good, Carol Bann, Al Toasty, Beth Benedict, and Len Carden. Those seven, six people down can do it, we're gonna give you fifteen seconds to vote. Adam McNeil and Len, you've got ten, five seconds, three, two, one. All righty, closing voting. Let's close voting, Mr. Korowski. It is two hundred and thirty-four in the affirmative, five in the negative. It's a vote by ninety-eight percent to update the committee. Thank you very much, the vote, and I so declare it. Again, that had been on our consent agenda, but no longer. Okay, that'll close Article Nine, bring us to Article Ten. Acceptance of Legislation, Gold Star Families. Ms. Magliazzo, what's your point of order?
Hi, Mr. Moderator, I was curious as to whether there was a recommended vote on this and where, because I was not able to find it.
Okay, if there was, it was in the Board of Select, the Select Board's report under Article Ten, and.
Oh, I see it.
Yeah, it's to accept legislation. I don't know if Mr. Chaplain or Mr. Hurd wish to speak to this. Mr. Hurd?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, John Hurd, Select Board Chair. This is an article inserted by the Select Board at the request of the Town Manager to provide a full tax exemption to parents or guardians of persons who have died in active service in the United States Armed Services. The Select Board strongly recommends positive action on this article to recognize the extraordinary sacrifice that our soldiers and their families make on behalf of our nation. The Select Board voted in favor of positive action, five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. Mr. Peter Howard? Mr. Howard?
Mr. Moderator, I've brought Jane. I've enabled Jane speaking, I don't see Mr. Howard in the list.
Okay, oh, well, Pete raised his hand, so it's on you, Jane. Jane, is Peter there?
Yes, he is.
Okay.
This is, this is he. Mr. Moderator, Peter Howard, Precinct Ten, how much is this gonna cost the town?
I, from my understanding, it's only one family that currently qualifies. Mr. Chaplain, do you have a dollar figure for that?
Adam Chaplain, Town Manager. I don't have that one family's tax bill. However, I can assure Mr. Howard in the town meeting that the granting of this exemption would, exemption would be taken out, taken out of the current abatement overlay, or the current overlay that we set aside, so we don't anticipate any new expenditure on behalf of the town to be able to grant this exemption.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Leah Hyam, Liba?
Liba Hyam, Precinct Eleven, I moved the question in all matters before it.
Thank you, Ms. Hyam. We have a motion to terminate debate.
Second.
It's been seconded, so we're gonna have a vote on the termination of debate. Okay, so town meeting members, please navigate over. Now, the precinct says, I called out before, when you get there, please vote one for yes to grant an exemption to the Gold Star Families, two, if you don't want to have that exemption, and then please hit cast your vote. If you're having an issue voting, either call Ms. Brazil, seven eight one three one six three zero seven one, or use the raise hand feature on Zoom. Okay, nineteen members have not voted yet on the termination of debate. Ten?
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator. Sophie Magliazzo has her hand raised.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I just see that there are four points of order, at least on my screen, that you're not addressing, sir.
Hi, I was looking at the voting screen, yes, I see that. Thank you. We'll have a, we'll send you here, Sophie, whoop, she's gone. So Mr. Quinn, Michael Quinn?
Mr. Moderator, when you called to vote for this, I believe you misspoke, and you asked, what you stated was that we would be voting on the article itself rather than the motion to terminate debate. To be clear, are we voting on the motion to terminate debate?
Yes, we are, sir.
Thank you.
Yes. So we're voting on the motion to terminate debate. If I misspoke, I do apologize. Ms. Broder, Leah Broder?
Leah Broder, Precinct One, I also heard when you called for the vote that you were calling for us to vote on the actual article, so I, I, I feel that in order to be fair, there, we would need to give people a chance to change their vote in case they.
Yep, they have, we haven't terminated voting yet, so anyone who, we're voting on the Article Ten to terminate the debate, if you voted in a manner that you didn't want to, please go ahead and change your vote. At this point, you still have that option.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
So voting to terminate debate, thank you, Ms. Broder. And Ms. Magliazzo?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, just to clarify, I also, when you spoke, you mentioned that in the misspeaking, you mentioned that we were voting on granting an exemption to Gold Star Families, parents specifically, and I just, that's slightly misspeaking, because they do already have an exemption on record, and without debate, we can't discuss that.
My understanding is we do not have such an exemption on record.
Mr. Poehler told me we did.
I don't.
Or I should clarify, they, we don't have a hundred percent exemption, they do receive a tax, one hundred percent.
I'll, I'll get that clarified. Mr. Hurd? Do you know what, we have any exemptions of that nature?
Ms. Moderator, John Hurd, Select Board Chair, I do not know, I'd refer to the Town Manager for that.
Okay.
Sir, I would.
Mr. Chaplain?
Adam Chaplain, Town Manager, Mr. Poehler's actually here, and he could probably speak to what information he provided to Ms. Magliazzo.
All right, while we get an answer from Ms. Magliazzo, we're gonna close voting, because everybody has voted. So Mr. Poehler?
Sir, I would say that, closing voting, though, this demonstrates why we should continue debate.
So Ms. Magliazzo, you asked a question, I'm getting your answer. It's a point of order, and it's really not a point of order, but I'm getting your answer anyway, so please, Mr. Poehler, do we have any such exemptions?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
Sandy Poehler, Deputy Town Manager. Currently on the books, there is a, an exemption, it is worth about five hundred dollars, I don't remember the exact figure, but it's a partial exemption, it's not the full exemption from property tax payments that is included in the motion before town meeting now, so it is a different exemption.
Thank you very much, Mr. Poehler. Okay. That answer your question, Ms. Magliazzo?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we're gonna vote on the motion itself, the Warren Article Ten to accept the legislation for Gold Star Family Tax Exemption. Once we get through the screens, so the motion to terminate debate carries by eighty-six percent. Two hundred and seven, the affirmative, thirty-three in the negative. Is that a new point of order for Mr. Quinn? Mr. Quinn, do you do?
Mr. Michael Quinn, Precinct Ten, I just want to be clear on what we're voting on. Currently Arlington has a hundred percent potential tax relief for surviving spouses of a veteran whose death occurred as a result of service.
Mr. Quinn?
Too deep?
That.
Is that what we're voting on, or is this?
We are voting, Mr.
Surviving spouse.
We are voting on the recommended vote in the Board of Select, the Select Board Order to accept Mass General Law Fifty-Nine C five twenty-two H to provide a local property tax exemption to the surviving parents or guardian of members of United States Armed Services who died in active duty and service in their country. That is what we're voting on.
So this is the parents, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn, yes. So it's Article Ten, we're now taking a vote to accept that legislation, if you want to accept that legislation. Okay, now Ms. Crowder has a point of order, and then Mr. Jamison. So we're gonna start our voting, if you wish to vote for this, please navigate over, and then I'm gonna have. Please press one for yes to accept the legislation, two for no. Mr. Jamison, what's your point, oh, Ms. Crowder, what's your point of order?
I just withdrew it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jamison, did you have a point of order?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, Gordon Jamison, I wanted a definition of local property tax.
Okay, so I'm gonna refer everybody back to the sheets I sent out last week saying what a point of order is, and I think Mr. Quinn's original point of order was the only one that really was a point of order. We all know what local property taxes are, Gordon, it's when the town sends us a bill, and it says you gotta pay ten thousand dollars to mail the money.
Would it include commercial?
It includes, if the. You should.
I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator.
And I'll. Mr. Poehler? Let's humor Gordon, does this conclude? Let's humor Gordon. Does this include commercial property?
Well, I don't believe it does because what it's applying to is homeowners. You have to be a homeowner, so that's an individual.
Thank you very much, Mr. Poehler. Anything else, Mr. Jamison?
No, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sorry to be out of order.
Yes, let's keep our points of order to actual points of order, folks. Thank you. And Sophie has another point of order.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm going to try and best to phrase this to stay within the rules of points of orders. And as was mentioned earlier, since there is already a partial exemption, a partial benefit, we're not modifying that, so.
I'm saying you're continuing debate, ma'am.
No, I'm just.
Sophia. You're continuing debate.
But I'm just saying, we're not deleting a section. We're simply.
I said we are accepting legislation. If we read the vote in the select board's report, now that you're that you are continuing debate. Thank you. Mr. Quinn, he's taken his point of order down. We have 36 folks left who have not voted yet. If you can, please do so now.
Mr. Moderator, Janice Weber has her hand raised.
Okay.
I got kicked out of. Yeah, I got kicked out of the portal.
Okay, can you hit refresh anywhere? Or can you refresh your screen by using the half circle up in the upper left-hand corner of your of your browser window? That should bring you right back in, Janice. Yeah, I noticed that. Janice, you seem to be in Zoom twice. You have two Zoom windows open. And that's going to be impacting you somehow. Can IT call you, Janice? Do we have her phone number? Andrew? All right, Janice, you're going to get a phone call. Okay, let's, we have seven people have not voted yet. Janice is one of them. Maybe we can get a verbal vote from Janice. Give that a minute. Elaine Crowder, Catherine Radville, Lynette Culverhouse, Michael Stern. Have not voted yet. If you please, will do so now. Okay. Let's just give it a half a second, see if we can get a vote from Janice. Is there a way to get that, Emily?
We received her vote.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right, everybody's voted, so let's close voting. Motion passes by 97%. We have 229 in the affirmative. Six in the negative. It's a vote, and I so declare it, and that closes Article 10. Soon as we get through the screens, we'll start Article 10. Article 11, I'm sorry. Homer of Legislation. Justin Brown. Okay, anyone wish to speak to this article, who brought it presented?
I will, Mr. Moderator. John Hertz, Select Board Chair. This is an article inserted by the Select Board at the request of Mr. Justin Brown and 10 registered voters to allow Mr. Brown to sit for the firefighter civil service exam. Even though he's over the age of 31, Mr. Brown is currently 39 years old. Select Board voted in favor of positive action, five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Joseph Tully.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I know you've asked us not to ask if you can hear us, but can you hear me?
Yes, I can, sir.
Thank you. I apologize. I wasn't certain if the unmute was working.
Yeah, just name it, name and precinct, please, Joe.
Tully, Precinct 14. I anticipated some opposition to this, having been through a few town meetings and perhaps my concern was was mistaken, but I suspect there will be some of my colleagues speaking in opposition to this, and I wanted to to get my two cents in. So first, I'd like to say, I don't know Mr. Brown. I don't know his story. I will defer to the select people that they have a reason for their 5-0 vote, and I would, I would respect that. But I've always found these rules to be a little bit arcane. You know, not everybody knows what they want to do with their life when they're in their 20s. And some of us come to our vocation a little bit later in life, and I've never understood why we would want to prevent somebody from pursuing his or her dream the way the rest of us are entitled to with whatever our our chosen field is. And I think some of, some of my colleagues will undoubtedly make the argument that this is not a personal issue. It's simply the fiscally prudent thing to do, and they will, they will tell you why that is, and so I'm not going to make their argument for you, but suffice to say, I disagree with it. And I'll tell you why I think that misses the mark. First, as I understand the rules, there's no guarantee that Mr. Brown will be hired. A favorable vote on this article simply affords him the opportunity to be placed in the pool of applicants. If he's never hired, then this entire vote is a moot point, and it really makes no difference whatsoever. Alternatively, should he be hired, one imagines that he is at least according to whatever metrics are involved, a better candidate than the person that would have been hired in his absence. And so I view that as a, as a public safety issue, as I prefer to have the best candidate serving our department. Secondly, I will tell you, this is my 27th year in town meeting, and I can say with virtual certainty that these articles are exceedingly rare. I'm going purely on my recollection, but I think there've been about maybe three or four in all of my time here. So the notion that approving this article is going to send us over some sort of fiscal cliff, I think simply doesn't have any basis in fact. Nor does the notion that if we approve this article, we'll face an onslaught of individuals looking to change their careers in their mid-30s. I think to suggest that is pure speculation, and there's simply no evidence to that effect. And finally, I would simply say, let's not lose sight of what this job is all about. It's a dangerous job. And people like Mr. Brown deserve our thanks. They don't deserve to have artificial roadblocks thrown up in their faces. There's no magical reason behind the 32-year age limit. I suppose the legislator and legislature and its wisdom could have just as easily made it 36 or 29 or anything else they wanted to. So there's no inherent reason why Mr. Brown can't be an asset to the Arlington Fire Department. The only thing standing in his way is essentially an arbitrary rule. So I would ask my fellow members to join me in voting favorably on this warrant article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tully. Michelle DeRosa?
Michelle DeRosa, Precinct 19. Looking at the language in the select board report, it makes reference to the the civil service law as applied in Arlington. And I have a question about what it would take to change that civil service law? And is there something related to how it is applied in Arlington that is on the books such that we could have an impact and change that?
Mr. Heim?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Doug Heim, Town Council. Yes, there is. The civil service law essentially offers a variety of options to communities. There are some communities that have no age limit. There are other communities that have an age limit to basically oriented towards when you take the exam versus when you be in service. We could put a warrant article on for the next town meeting if town meeting was inclined to revisit revisit the rules for Arlington and eliminate or revise our upper age limit for taking the exam. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. DeRosa?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Heim. I, I would suggest then that we do so, that we revisit this as a law, as it applies in Arlington, and not as it applies to Mr. Justin Brown. Like Mr. Tully, I do not know Mr. Brown, and I have nothing against Mr. Brown. However, I find it to be a capricious means of making exceptions for individuals who have either the knowledge that they can request an exemption to this law. And it goes against our, our attempts to be an inclusive community. It looks like a special favor rather than having laws on the books that we want to enforce and not make exceptions if people ask. Now, the select board report talked about how in the, historically, these have been supported. So all the more reason to change the law for Arlington if indeed this law no longer is serving the needs and the will of the leadership. So that's all. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Ms. DeRosa. Serena Memmon?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, Serena Memmon, Precinct 21. I wanted to know, why was a law like this put in? Does anybody know of the civil service law? I know Doug Heim, our attorney for the town, had mentioned some things about knowing age limit in some towns and then some have limits and so forth, and we can revisit this law and so forth. But I just was wondering, does, does anybody know why it was put in first?
Mr. Heim, this predates your time, but would you have any estimate of why this is?
Doug Heim, Town Council, I'm happy to answer this to the best of my ability. The fire chief and the town manager may have additional comments. At the time that the civil service law was enacted, there may have been, according to my recollection of the select board hearing, there may have been more acute concerns about the age of police officers and firefighters at the beginning of the term of their service. Frankly speaking, people are, you know, healthier longer, and we have a better ability to gauge somebody's physical fitness for sitting, becoming a firefighter than we may have had, you know, back when the, this provision of the civil service law was enacted. I think that individual communities were afforded some discretion to decide how much control they wanted to exercise for folks over a certain age so that they could have some determination, chief by chief, for example, of whether or not they really had concerns from a from any number of perspectives about the ability of somebody over the age of 32 to, to sit for the exam and potentially become a firefighter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heim.
Thank you. And likewise, there a limit on how long a firefighter can be employed? I mean, is there an age limit on the, on the other end of retirement? When they should be retiring? Is there a restriction on that?
Attorney Heim, do you know if there's an upper age limit at which a firefighter must retire?
Sir, moderator, Doug Heim, Town Council. I apologize. I don't know that off the top of my head. The manager or the W. Town Manager may know. I can try to find that out.
Okay. Mr. Chapdeline, do you know that answer?
Adam Chapdeline, Town Manager, I don't mean to continue to pass around. I know Chief Kelly is here. I'm not familiar with the mandatory retirement age, but Chief Kelly could definitely clarify that one way or the other.
Let's hear from Chief Kelly. His first time in front of town meeting.
Good me, good evening, Mr. Moderator. This is Kevin Kelly, the fire chief. Yes, the mandatory retirement age is 65.
65?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, Chief Kelly.
All right, I just have a couple quick other points. And one was, this, this article will be expiring if he, Justin Brown gets this authority to take this test on June 1st, 2023. Is that correct? Is that what I'm reading?
Yes.
Okay, and so I do feel that this, this will be fine. We could pass this. I think that's fine, but I do agree with the previous speakers that we need to revisit this law. It's our care with the current tools of firefighting as well as with the knowledge of health. And I think they should probably, I don't know if there's a sex limit, not sex, gender limit on firefighters. I don't believe there's any women firefighters in Arlington. Are there?
Chief Kelly? Chief Kelly, do you have any females on your force?
Also, could we see if there's diversity?
This is Adam Chapdeline, Town Manager. I can confirm there is, there is one female firefighter currently.
And anything on diversity too, please?
I don't have, I'm sorry, Adam Chapdeline, Town Manager, I don't have any diversity statistics regarding the staffing of the fire department in front of me right now.
Okay, that's, we're getting a little bit of outside of the scope of the actual article, Ms. Memmon, so, yes.
Sorry about that. So I'm in agreement with this Article 11. And I do think that we do need to revise this of the upper limit of the exam because and I'd like to learn more about the no age limit, which sounds how that, if we can find that out in the future.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, this is Chief Kelly. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I will answer that question. We, we currently have one female and we have two Hispanic firefighters.
Okay, thank you very much, chief. Okay, so the next on the list. Let's hear Dan Dunn.
Mr. Moderator, I spoke. Could you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now, Mr. Dunn.
You know, Mr. Moderator, it doesn't make much sense for me to talk if you can't hear me. That's why we keep asking you whether or not you can hear you. Dan Dunn, Precinct 21, I move the question.
Darn it, Dan, you said way too many words, but I think it's okay because you're asking if you asked if we could hear you.
Second.
Seconded. We have a motion to terminate debate. And it's been seconded, so Mr. Korowski is going to bring up the terminate debate. Okay, once we see the voting screen, the precincts one through seven will go over now for three or four seconds, nine, eight through fourteen, and then a few seconds later, fifteen through twenty-one go on over to the Zoom portal. No, excuse me, to the voting portal from Zoom to the voting portal. If you have a voting issue, please use the raise hand feature on Zoom, or if you wish to terminate debate and can't get through, call Ms. Brazil, seven eight one three one six three zero seven one. Press one to terminate debate, or two to continue the debate, and then hit cast your vote. Hundred ninety-eight, if you have already successfully voted.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Doug Heim has his hand raised.
Okay. Mr. Heim?
Mr. Moderator, I don't want to speak out of order, I hadn't answered to Ms. Memmon's question, and one, I guess it is a point of order though, not a town meeting member, so I can't make one.
Well, we'll hear what you have to say.
So first, to answer Ms. Memmon's question, there are quite a few communities with no upper age limit, ranging from Brookline, Cambridge, Chelsea, and Everett, to Melrose, Newburyport, Peabody, North Reading, Needham, many, many communities have no large upper age limit. Secondly, normally, well, I'd ask the moderator if he recalls. I think normally, we would invite Mr. Brown to speak and make his own case to town meeting. He obviously can't do that in this circumstance because he's not a town meeting member. So I just note that ordinarily, we might have an opportunity to hear something a little bit more organically from Mr. Brown. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, it looks like Brian Riehrig and Scott Lieber have not voted yet, a few guys will vote. And Sophie Magliazzo has not voted yet, so a few three folks will vote. Give you about ten seconds, fifteen seconds, and we're going to close voting on the motion to terminate debate. Okay, that's it, time's up, let's close the voting. Okay, it's ninety-two percent in favor of terminating debate, two hundred twenty-one in the affirmative, and twenty in the negative. Okay, it's, we're going to take the final vote, then we're going to take our five, six-minute break after we take the vote on the article. Okay, so that's it, let's take our vote on the article. And then we're going to take a break. Okay, so precincts one through seven, navigate over to the voting portal. Precincts eight through fourteen, go ahead and navigate over. And then fifteen through twenty-one, go ahead. When you get there, please vote one for yes, two for no, and then cast your vote. If you're having an issue, either call Ms. Brazil, seven eight one three one six three oh seven one, or use the raised hand feature on Zoom so we know you're having an issue voting. Now, we're voting to allow Mr. Justin Brown to take the firefighter exam. Civil service exam. If you want Mr. Brown to take it, vote one for yes. If you think he should not be allowed to vote two for no, and then cast your vote. And Amy Miller, Richie Gallagher, Mike Rudeman, Sophie Magliazzo have not voted yet, a few people would please vote. And we're going to give those three people down to three, fifteen seconds to vote on this article. Michael, Richard, and Sophie. And that's time, so let's close voting. And that passes by ninety percent margin. It's two hundred and fourteen in the affirmative, twenty-four in the negative, and it passes by ninety percent, and it's a vote, and I so declare it. All right, we're going to go through the screens, but if you're town meeting members, want to take a five to ten, five, six, seven-minute break, and then we'll be back. Okay, so town meeting members were back, and that closed Article eleven, that brings us to Article twelve. Home Rule Legislation: Consolidation of Town Meeting Member Elections. Mr. Diggins has a point of order.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator, actually, this is more a question of privilege, and it's two. And it involves the my concern about town meeting, and the reputation of town meeting, respect to Article twenty-five. Because I understand the desire not to have lengthy debate and to stick to the tradition of handling resolutions by just having four minutes of each side. But it was the desire of the Select Board to really get the will of town meeting members. Given the nature of this question, that can be reduced in ways that can misconstrue the will of the voter. I was wondering if it might be possible for town meeting members to submit statements that can get entered into the record to go along with their vote?
That actually is, that's a request. I'll entertain that request and get back to you on that.
Okay. That's fine.
But you know, my feeling on this, way outside the scope of Article twelve, but my feeling on this resolution is frankly, this is a board of select, this is a Select Board issue, and you guys punted by putting it in my lap and town meeting's lap. If you guys, we have nothing to do with town hall and what's hung on town hall and what the board, the Select Board wishes to do with town hall has nothing to do with town meeting. We have very limited powers, they pass bylaws, pass zoning bylaws, and spend money. That's all town meeting can do. If the Select Board wished to have hearings on this, they could have had all the open hearings they wanted. They put it on us and tried to shift the forum from themselves to the town meeting where it doesn't belong, in my opinion. And this is why I've never really liked resolutions that have nothing to do with town meetings prerogatives. I'll entertain the request that you've made to me, and I'll get back to the meeting on that next Monday.
I appreciate that.
But frankly, I wasn't pleased when the Select Board shifted this to us because it was not a town meeting issue in the slightest.
I appreciate that, Mr. Moderator. And I appreciate, and I'm asking this now because I don't want to wait until the end of the night.
I understand, yeah, and we don't want to wait till the twenty, till we get there.
And here's my second question, a question of privilege question, and that is, I understand that we were allowing the four minutes for yes and no, and I also understand-
I'm actually allowing seven minutes.
Okay, seven minutes.
The proponents had a seven-minute video already prepared, so I allowed them to, I was going to, I let everybody go to seven minutes to accommodate their video.
Great, thanks, thanks, I appreciate that. And so normally, abstains don't matter, but I think in this case, an abstain sends a different message than a yes or a no. And so I'm wondering if it might be possible to allow the, those who want to propose abstaining to also have seven minutes?
No.
Okay, thank you for entertaining that suggestion. Take care.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, let's try and keep things on the scope of the article. Thank you, Mr. Diggins. This is Jim O'Connor. Article twelve, Home Rule Legislation: Consolidation of Town Meeting Member Elections. Mr. O'Connor is on the committee who introduced the article.
Good evening, members of town meeting. The Election Modernization Committee conducted a collaborative survey with Envision Arlington and surveyed opinions of things that we should investigate and study. And so I'd like to turn over this article to Jennifer Seuss, who has a presentation on how we explored the voting for town meeting members in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Hi. Jennifer Seuss, Precinct Three, also a member of the Election Modernization Committee, on whose behalf I'm presenting this article. Article twelve, the consolidation of town meeting member elections, is a home rule petition. It was reported out favorably by the Select Board. So under our current situation, when there's a midterm vacancy, so someone can't fulfill the entire three years, that vacancy is put onto next year's ballot. So next year, there would be the usual four slots for a three-year term, and then an additional slot for a one- or two-year term. That can be fairly confusing to new potential candidates. It also introduces opportunities for gamesmanship. Under current practice, you can lose a contest for a three-year term with more votes than someone who wins for a one- or two-year term, or vice versa, which is undemocratic and doesn't reflect the will of the voters. So let's look at an example. Under this example, there are five people running for a three-year term, Raj, Kim, Keisha, Bob, and Curtis, and one person running for a three-year term, Tracy. And here's the vote count, and here's how it comes out. Raj, Kim, Keisha, and Bob, who are the highest vote-getters for the three-year contest, get onto town meeting. And Tracy, who's uncontested, gets on for the one-year slot, even though she has thirty-few votes in Curtis. Maybe she's especially controversial, or maybe there's some other reason. So under this proposal, all open seats are elected to in single contests. So there'd be five slots, and the top four vote-getters are elected to a three-year term, next any available two-year terms, and so forth. So let's go back to our example. Here's the final vote tally, and here's the result. So Raj, Kim, Keisha, and Bob, who are the top four vote-getters, get a three-year term. And Curtis, who is the fifth highest vote-getter, gets a one-year term. And Tracy does not get onto town meeting. So just some additional thoughts. We already do this process when we redistrict, if we redraw the district lines every ten years. Everyone runs for town meeting again, and the top four vote-getters get on for three-year terms, the next four for the two-year terms, and so forth. Also, that it's, this is not an unusual way to do things, there are other town meeting member elections that work this way, including our neighboring Lexington. We think it's more democratic, it better reflects the will of the voters, it's less confusing, and it reduces opportunities for gamesmanship. So that is it, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. O'Connor?
No, I wanted to defer the remainder of my time to Jennifer to wrap it up.
Okay, I can call on Ms. Seuss.
Hi, Jennifer Seuss, Precinct Three. We gave the positive reasons, I just wanted to bring up some potential objections and respond to them. The major objection I've heard, which is an objection, is that it can sometimes be easier to get a new county member to run for a one- or two-year term. The second objection is that there, someone might run and not know how many years they'll be serving because they might only want to run for one year, but get the high vote. And I just wanted to say that I think that these are legitimate objections, but I just think they're outweighed by the fact that we're decreasing gamesmanship, where it's more democratic, it's less confusing, and so forth. And I think that once you get into a system where you have, say, five or six votes on a ballot, it's going to be less difficult to drop out mid-year if it turns out that you can't serve the entire term. It just won't feel as significant that something has, someone has to be recruited for that special slot. So that's it, I hope you vote favorably on this action.
Thank you, Ms. Seuss, thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Diane Mahan?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move to terminate debate on this matter, any items related there too.
Okay, Ms. Mahan's motion to terminate debate has been seconded by Mr. Foskin. Okay. Okay, once we see the voting screen, so precincts one through seven, go ahead over to the voting portal to terminate debate on Article twelve. Press one for yes, two for no. Precincts seven through fourteen, go ahead on over now. And then a minute, fifteen through twenty-one, hit over to the voting portal. And then please choose one for yes to terminate debate, two for no to continue debating the issue, and then hit cast your vote if you're having an issue. Please use the raised hand figure, feature on Zoom. And if you can't get a vote in at all, please contact Ms. Brazil, seven eight one three one six three zero seven one. And Ms. Broder has a point of order, Leah Broder.
Leah Broder, Precinct One. Is there a way, when there's a motion to terminate debate, that you could tell us how many people are in the queue waiting to speak? I get the sense that my screen is not showing.
Whatever, the screen that's on, the Zoom screen is showing all the people who are on the queue to speak. So everybody who's there is on that queue in alphabetical order by first name. So you see the speaking list, that's everyone who's there.
And then as soon as the move to terminate debate comes up, we lose that?
Yes, because we've opened a voting screen. I don't know what happened if the terminating debate lost, if it would come back to the same speaker list or not. We haven't encountered that eventuality yet. If it does, we'll find out.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Broder. Okay, now voting on termination debate of Article twelve. Two hundred twenty-eight members have cast a vote, sixteen are outstanding. Okay, nine are outstanding. Jane Morgan, Mark McCabe, Sue Stamps, James O'Connor, and Peter Thompson all have to vote on the termination of debate. I'm going to give you guys fifteen seconds. And time's up. Let's close voting. Debate is terminated, 81%, 192 in the affirmative, 45 in the negative. Debate is terminated. Okay, as soon as we go through the screens. Okay. So let's take a vote on the main motion of Article 12. It's printed in the select report of the board, the Select Board's report, to rearrange voting in the manner explained to us by Ms. Seuss in her video. So we're going to enable voting. When we see the voting grids. Please, 1 through 7, go on over to the voting portal. Refresh if you have to. 8 through 15, go ahead on over. And then 16 through 21. Click 1 for yes if you want to rearrange the voting patterns, 2, no if you want to keep things the way they are, and then click cast your vote. If you're having an issue voting, please use the raise hand feature, or call Ms. Brazil. And to answer the former speaker's question on her point of order, the voting list would have come back in the same order that it was prior to the motion to terminate. So it would have come right back the way it was. So go ahead and cast your vote at this point on the article itself. If you want to do it, please vote 1 for yes. If you don't, 2 for no, and then cast your vote. I have six people haven't voted. Okay, Janice Morgan and John Gersh have outstanding votes. They're just taking one second to manually enter in two votes that were phoned in. And as soon as they're ready, we'll close voting. And. Okay, looks like we're all set. Let's close voting. The article passes by 88%. We have 213 in the affirmative, 29 in the negative. It's a vote, and I so declare it. That will close Article 12 and bring us to Article 13. As soon as we go through the screens, we'll go to Article 13. Article 13, Home Rule Legislation, Rank Choice Voting. Mr. Hurd, when you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Hurd, Select Board Chair. Article 13 is in regards to rank choice voting. Just a point of clarification, the Select Board originally voted for positive action by a vote of 5 to 0 on this at the request of the Election Modernization Committee. The Select Board revisited this article last Monday and entered a vote of no action, 5 to 0 on this article. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you very much. Mr. O'Connor? James O'Connor?
James O'Connor, Chair of the Election Modernization Committee from Precinct 19. Our committee revisited this article and voted shortly before town meeting to withdraw the article from consideration and made the same request to the Select Board. We feel that there needs to be more time to educate the community, study the issue, refine our actual language of the home rule petition, and so therefore, we ask for a vote of no action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. To let the town meeting members know, I've personally spoken with Mr. Paul Schlickman and Mr. Adam Foster, both of which had pending motions to amend. They have both withdrawn those amendments as a result of the Select Board and the Election Modernization Committee.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Foskin. Now, Mr. Timor Yantar has a point of order. Mr. Yantar?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Timor Kaya Yantar, Precinct 7. I'm also looking at the members' email list page on the town website, and neither the revised report of the Election Modernization Committee, nor a revised vote from the Select Board, was posted to members. I believe this is poor procedure.
Well, we're just getting, I was informed of this the other day. They didn't give us a written, neither committee or the Select Board submitted a written modification, but because they were just doing, changing their votes to no action, perhaps they felt it was not necessary. And I think it was as a result of the ranked choice voting losing at the state level. I will take up your point of order with them, but at this point in time, we have nothing before us, because everything has been changed to no action. So there's really, frankly, nothing to discuss under this article. Do you have anything further, Mr. Yantar?
Just to say that because both the committee and the Select Board did not post their notifications to town meeting, I don't think we should be voting on this tonight. I think that we should table it and bring it up on a subsequent night, when we can have a report in front of us that says no action, and then we can let it go by. I'm being pedantic. I understand that.
Oh, okay. I thought you were making a motion to table. I was worried, because we have a no-action votes in front of us.
All I'm saying is follow the rules.
Yes, sir. I'll bring that up with the chairman of the Select Board and with the Election Modernization Committee. I'll bring your point to them. Thank you. Anything else? No, okay. We actually have two votes of no action, so there's really nothing to discuss here. And unless you're confused on voting of no action, I'm not sure what Mr. O'Connor or Ms. Perrin have to bring a point of order on. So we'll have Ms. Perrin first. I know I'm not saying that right.
Am I muted yet? It's Kristen Penneron. I'm sorry, Kristen Penneron from Precinct 20. I am new to town meeting, so my point of order is indeed a question about process, specifically the way that the online warrant is functioning in regard to the Select Board's changed recommendation. When I click on the online warrant now, I still see 5-0 vote by the Select Board. I don't see any reference to the changed recommendation to vote no action. Is that to be expected, or is that just a online process?
From my experience, when the Select Board meets after their report is issued, they do not always issue a new report if they have changed their vote to no action. They just announce it at town meeting.
Okay, that does make sense to me. Again, I am new to town meeting, and I appreciate the clarification. I find the electronic materials extremely useful, and whenever they are updated, I always notice. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. So, Mr. O'Connor, do you really have a good point of order, or is your name just left over there?
I do have a point of order, Mr. Moderator, and that is, on November 12th, the Election Modernization Committee met. There's an agenda that was posted several days prior, as per the open meeting law, and it did state that we were going to revisit our vote on Article 13. Because we haven't met since that meeting, we haven't been able to post minutes of that meeting. And we intended to bring this matter before town meeting when it came up on the agenda, because of the limited number of days in between.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Okay, we have no motions or motions before us, so we actually have nothing to speak. So we're just going to go right to a vote. So it's a vote of no action. Okay, so town meeting members, please navigate over to the voting portal. Stagger yourselves getting over there. And then put the vote of no action. So if you want to take no action on Article 13, please press 1 for yes. If you do not want to take no action, press 2 for no. And then click cast your vote. If you're having issue voting, please use the raised hand feature, or call Ms. Brazil, 781-316-3071. So 1 for yes, no action, 2 for no, and cast your vote. We have 22 members who have not voted yet. So if you'll please go ahead and vote.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Janice Weber is raising her hand.
Okay, let's get Janice up. Ms. Weber? Hi, Janice. You can speak.
Second. It doesn't say no action on the screen, so it looks like you're voting for the article.
Well, no, we're voting on no action, because all the, I know that, Janice. We can't go back and change everything on the fly, but I've announced it. It's a no-action vote.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure my screen wasn't messed up.
Yeah, it's not. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so eight members who have not voted yet. Please vote 1 for yes for no action, 2 for, I guess, you don't want to not take no action. And then hit cast your vote. Curtis O'Connor, Dean Carmen, Samantha Dutra, Lisa Blankenspor, Michael Brown, Peter Thompson, Nada El Nuwey have not voted. Okay, we're just finishing off doing a couple of the manual votes. As soon as I get the all clear, we're going to close voting.
Mr. Moderator, Timor has his hand raised.
Okay. Actually, Stephen Leggett has a point of order.
That's what I was calling about.
Okay. Mr. Leggett?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve Leggett, Precinct 9. I'm puzzled. I don't recall ever voting for no action before.
We always vote no action, and we always.
We don't actually cast a vote, though.
We do it at town meeting. We usually do it verbally, because no action, we have to vote and clear every single warrant article, even no action votes. So at town hall, we just have a verbal vote for no action, because there's nothing else to do. So we're going to, that's why it may seem like we never did it. But here, we got to go through the motions.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Thank you, Mr. Leggett. All right, let's close voting. That's a no-action vote by 98%. 222 in the affirmative, 14 in the negative. And that closes Article 13 and brings us to Article 14. Home Rule Legislation Senior Water Discount. We have the recommended vote of the Board of Select Board in their report, that they want to have home rule legislation providing senior water discounts. Soon as we're done with the screens, Mr. Karowski will move us over. Then we're going to take Nancy Bloom's point of order while we wait. What's your point of order, Ms. Bloom?
Nancy Bloom, Precinct 18. Mr. Moderator, I believe you said the numbers wrong in the previous counting. It was, I believe, 14 abstentions, and five were no's, or some, I think you said.
Oh, I did. I got it. I'm sorry, Ms. Bloom. You're correct. Five no's, 14 abstentions, five no's. Thank you for correcting me.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. 222, yes, five no's on number 13. And Alan Jones had a point of order. Go ahead, Adam. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Alan Jones, Precinct 14. Is this an opportunity for you to remind town meeting members, I was speaking of Article 14, to remind town meeting members of the bylaw that says, "A town meeting member who speaks upon any matter in which the speaker or their immediate family has a direct financial interest shall first disclose such interest to the meeting." I think a few of us are over 65. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Very good point, Mr. Jones. Thank you very much. Okay, we're on Article 14. Mr. Hurd, you have to speak to this.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is an article inserted by the Select Board to file home rule legislation to extend the availability of water discounts to a broader set of Arlington seniors. to extend the availability of water discounts to a broader set of Arlington seniors. The select board voted in favor of positive action five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you very much. Mr. Deist. John, you can unmute yourself.
All right. I am an elderly person and.
But we don't know who you are.
John Dice, Precinct 13.
Ah, thank you.
And as everyone well knows, I'm an elderly person. And it seems to me that it's inappropriate to make me a special person as opposed to those who really need relief financially. So I'd like to modify this article and take out the part about elderly person, elderly. Thank you very much.
Okay. I guess, were you making a, a motion? Well, okay. Ms. Mahad? Diane Mahad?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd like to move to terminate debate on this matter. Any, any items we leave there too?
Okay. We have a motion to terminate debate.
Mr. Moderator, point of order?
Yes, sir.
I, I'm unclear as to whether I'm supposed to second what Mr. Dice said or not.
I'm not sure.
My understanding is that you have to submit an amendment in advance.
Yeah, you do. Forty-eight hours. And I wasn't even sure what he was asking if to make a valid motion or not. So I don't think there was anything to.
The second.
Second.
Okay. I second Ms. Mahad's.
Termination?
Yes.
Okay. So the motion to terminate debate has been seconded. And we're going to go ahead and take a vote on that. I think we already heard Ms. Bloom, right, on her point of order?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm all set.
Okay, thank you very much. If you guys are all set, you can use the lower hand feature and then that, that clears the decks for us. So we're going to enable voting on the motion to terminate debate on Article 14. If you wish to terminate debate, once we get the voting grids in front of us, go ahead, one through seven, pop over to the voting portal. Eight through 15, go ahead, pop over there. And sixteen through 21. Refresh if you have to. You should get your voting screen. If you have an issue, please call Ms. Brazil, seven eight one three one six three oh seven one, or use the race and feature in Zoom. One, yes, to terminate debate. Two, no, to continue debating the issue. And click cast your vote. Hundred ninety-nine voting, forty-five have not voted yet. Thirty-four. Down to seventeen voting. Too many to read. We'll give everybody another second then, see how they're doing on the termination of debate. One for yes, two for no, cast your vote. Okay. Courtney Urick, Marion King, Samantha Dutra, Pam Hallett, Lauren Boyle, Dave White, Tanuta Forbes. Pam Hallett, Lauren Boyle. Stacy Smith and Laura Tracy have not voted. If you guys go ahead and vote, we're going to give you 15 seconds. Five seconds left to vote if you haven't voted yet. And, okay, time's up. Let's close voting. It's seventy-three percent. Hundred sixty-five, the affirmative, sixty-one in the negative. If it's a two-thirds vote, and I so declare it, debate is terminated on Article 14. That will bring us back to the recommended vote as soon as we get through the screens. Okay. Now we're going to take a vote on the main article. It's printed in the Select Board's report to authorize senior water discounts. And go ahead, one through seven, go over to the voting portal. Eight through 14. And fifteen through 21. Go on over, vote one, yes, to authorize senior water discounts. Two, if you do not want to authorize those discounts. And then click cast your vote. If you have a voting issue, please use the raise hand feature and/or call Ms. Brazil. Seven eight one three one six three zero seven one. Okay. I have to refresh my page, see how we're doing. Okay, nineteen people have not voted yet on this article. If you could please do so now. All our verbal votes have been manually entered. If you have not voted yet, Amy Lim, Lynn, Lynn Miller, Dave White, Sue Stamps, Elaine Crowder, Lauren Boyle, Courtney Urick, Lynette Calverhaus, Pam Hallett, Samantha Dutra, John Ellis, Stacy Smith, Laura Tracy, Michael Brown, please go ahead and vote. I'm going to give you 15 seconds. And let's close voting. The article carries by 96%. We have 217 in the affirmative, nine in the negative. It's a vote, and I so declare it. That closes Article 14, brings us to Article 15. Go through the screens, Article 15 is home rule legislation, retired police officer details. Soon as we finish with the screens. We'll bring Mr. Heard up soon as Adam brings up the proper warrant article. Mr. Heard, you wish to speak to the article?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Heard, Select Board Chair. This is an article inserted by the Select Board to file home rule legislation to allow the town manager to hire retired police officers in good standing to be special police officers for the purpose of performing details and any police duties associated with said detail work. The Select Board voted in favor of positive action five zero. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Very much. Ms. Dre? Elizabeth Dre?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator and fellow town meeting members. Elizabeth Dre, Precinct eight. I'm speaking for encouraging a no vote on this article. Last March, at the Select Board's initial hearing of this article, I spoke and asked the Select Board to add language to prevent an officer with a disciplinary record from benefiting from this bylaw. At that moment, they declined. This fall, I reached out again and working with Town Council Attorney Heim and Selectman Kuro that, and other community members, that language was successfully added. And I sincerely appreciate the Select Board's willingness to revisit that, revisit the issue because residents are safer and the article is better as a result of that work. However, after continued discussion with and input from marginalized community members in Arlington, and after more in-depth research, I decided that I could not ultimately vote to support this article tonight. And there's two reasons. The first is that there is no set or spelled out requirement that retired officers continue professional training on any subject, including de-escalation, anti-bias, mental health, or trauma-informed care, or even weapons training. According to an email from Chief Flaherty, these officers will not be subject to Mass General Law Part One, Title seven, Chapter 41, Section 96B, which says, quote, "Every police officer on a full-time basis in any such municipal police department shall be assigned to and shall attend a prescribed course of study approved by the Municipal Police Training Committee for in-service officers' training at such intervals and for such periods as said department may determine," which basically just means continuing education, continued professional training. And furthermore, filling this work need with retired police is a step in the wrong direction. It, if we pass this article, this article will increase the size of the police department at a time when the black community, both locally and nationwide, is advocating for less policing, not more. So I would like to ultimately see the town explore shifting the responsibility of detail work from the police department to civilian traffic flaggers as permitted by state law and as successfully accomplished in at least 27 other Massachusetts communities. If town meeting passes this bylaw tonight, it will put a huge obstacle in the path towards hiring civilian flaggers in the future. Future contract negotiations with the police unions will need to then remove this very lucrative job from retired officers. And that will add a substantial hurdle to moving this responsibility from the police department and into the hands of civilians where it belongs. In light of that, I respectfully ask my fellow town meeting members to vote no on this article tonight. Thank you for your consideration. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Ms. Dre. Timor Yontar?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Timor Kai Yontar, Precinct seven. This article is a request made to town meeting. Although the town has reached a collective bargaining agreement with the Superior Officers' Police Union about using retired police for details and must bring this to town meeting for consideration, we are not bound by that. We are free to vote this up or down. Now, I realize that the question is about retired police being used for details, not about non-police flagmen. But this article is proposed because there is a need for additional personnel for details beyond active police officers, which means that if the article is not approved, the town will need to find additional personnel elsewhere. So through the moderator, I have a few questions that perhaps town staff could answer.
Very good.
Is it legal to employ non-police flagmen for traffic and construction details in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts?
Attorney Heim? Attorney, oh, there you go.
Doug Heim, Town Council. Yes, it is legal to employ civilians for a similar role. I, I leave it to the manager or the deputy town manager, the police chief to go into further depth on that if you need to, but it is legal, yes.
Thank you.
A second. Does the town of Arlington employ non-police flagmen for traffic and construction details?
Chief Flaherty?
Mr. Moderator, I'm sorry. I think that's a better question for the town manager.
Oh, okay. Oh, we hear from Chief, uh, town manager. Thank you, Mr. Heim.
Adam Chaplain, Town Manager. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. No, currently the town does not employ civilian flaggers for traffic or construction details.
Okay, thank you. Number three, please. If you can tell me, how much does the town spend annually on traffic and construction details? And what part of the budget does that fall under?
Chaplain?
There is no, excuse me, Adam Chaplain, Town Manager. There is no operating budget expenditure related to the work on construction or traffic details. Most of this work is paid for by private parties, the utilities or real estate developers who may need a detail to keep the site safe. When the town is doing roadwork that requires a construction detail, it is paid for out of that capital budget. It's always budgeted as part of the project and is paid for out of that capital budget. When the town bills an outside entity, again, such as a utility, we charge a 10% overhead rate for the administrative oversight or overhead that goes in to managing the detail system.
Okay, thanks. Just a couple more questions here. Is there a difference in the hourly rate between employing non-police flagmen and police details?
Mr. Chaplain?
Adam Chaplain, Town Manager. So under, I believe it was in 2008, there was reforms made at the state level to further allow civilian flaggers. And under that reform, civilian flaggers were required to be paid prevailing wage. Currently, I believe prevailing wage for civilian flagger in Massachusetts is $46.88 per hour. Currently in Arlington, an officer working a traffic detail is paid $51.58 per hour.
Okay, so that's about a 10% difference. Thank you. Again, through the moderator, but probably for the town manager. Why does the town not employ non-police flagmen?
Mr. Chaplin.
Adam Chaplin, Town Manager. I'll answer to some degree, but I would also ask if Chief Flaherty could further speak to this particular question. I would say first and foremost, it's long been the position of both Chief Ryan and I know Chief Flaherty that having officers in the field working traffic details can serve as a force multiplier and enhance the ability of the department to be responsive to crisis or calls. I can't cite the exact examples, but I know the chief likely can, where officers working traffic details have been the first on-site to apprehend felons or save people from life-threatening situations. Arlington is comparably lower-staffed in terms of its police department on a per capita basis than most of our comparable communities, so having this force multiplier in the field has always been deemed helpful. Additionally, and this gets into a longer conversation, it's been longstanding practice in Arlington and really across the entirety of the Commonwealth to have police officers work traffic and construction details. That work that they perform in doing those details, in some cases, makes up to, makes up close to thirty percent of an officer's take-home compensation on a year-over-year basis. Eliminating that and thereby reducing officers' pay by that much would obviously be, have to be part of a very serious collective bargaining negotiation and would likely require significant concessions on the part of the town in terms of their base compensation. So it becomes a very complicated matter to try to address to move to civilian flaggers. And I'd like to ask Chief Flaherty to speak to this with more clarity than I can, but I also know that the civilian flaggers are not allowed on all jobs. I might have this backwards. I believe they're allowed on state road jobs, but not, not other private details, but I think the chief could speak with more specificity on that point.
Well, I'm going to see if Mr. Timor Yontar needs additions, because he's butting up against the.
I'm running out of time, so thank you. And yeah, I just want to mention that if the town, if it's a means for police to supplement their salaries, if the town were to save money on details by using flagmen, they could use the savings to increase salaries. So thank you for the answers. I would like to conclude by saying I don't see the need for this article. And I am not, I must say, I am not a supporter of defunding the police, but I would say also that if there is a need for additional personnel, there are other available means, and they are cheaper. I will be voting no. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Christian Klein.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Christian Klein, Precinct Ten. I would ask if you could ask to have some clarification to Sections Two and the last line of Section Five. These are either exemptions or direct exemptions from specific Massachusetts laws, and I think clarification in those regards would be helpful. Thank you.
Mr. Heim, can you clarify Section Two and Section Five for Mr. Klein?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Doug Heim, Town Council. So Section Two references a whole slew of laws that are primarily oriented around around not affording any special officers the same rights that full-time officers have. So for example, Chapter Thirty-One is basically the civil service law. These retired officers wouldn't be entitled to protections under the civil service law that full-time officers would. Sections eighty-five H and eighty-five H and a half of Chapter Thirty-Two are basically references to disability retirement for police and fire, which again, these are already retired officers. Section Ninety-Nine A, one hundred and one eleven F, all those things are references to indemnification for officers, what we call line of duty, leave without, leave with pay for, it's basically a version of workers' comp for police officers. And then Chapter One Fifty-E is basically the labor provisions that provide for collective bargaining. So most of these things are references to, in Section Two, are references to things that full-time officers, both in Arlington and other municipalities, have available to them. But because these would be retired police officers, they wouldn't be available to these officers, especially since they serve at the pleasure of the manager and the police chief and can be terminated or not renewed with or without cause. Section Five speaks a little bit to what I believe Ms. Dre was talking about before. That's Section Ninety-Six B of Chapter Forty-One of the general laws. These are basically training requirements, and I believe these were referenced in the materials provided by FinCom. It doesn't apply to police officers, to detail officers, because they're not considered reserve officers or full-time officers under the statute. That means that they're not required to have all the same training as a full-time officer for good or for ill, and I hope that answers Mr. Klein's questions to satisfaction.
Mr. Klein.
It does. Thank you very much, Mr. Heim. This is very interesting kind of information. This is the kind of information that comes out when we're able to ask questions to the articles. There has been a spate of articles this evening where debate has been closed on either the first or second speaker. This is not something I recall happening when we were meeting in person, and I would strongly encourage that although we are in a rush to get this done and we do want to see an end to Town Meeting, that the posing of questions and the open discussion of articles is a key aspect of Town Meeting in the town of Arlington, and that we not take that for granted and we not prematurely end discussion on articles before us. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Sanjay Newton.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Sanjay Newton, Precinct Ten. First, I wanted to just really support what Mr. Klein previously just mentioned about not terminating debate too early. I think it's really important to have these discussions. This evening, I rise metaphorically, I suppose, to urge a no vote on Article Fifteen. Ms. Dre has made excellent points about continued training and the size of police force, and I support those rationales, especially as Mr. Chaplin refers to detail officers as a force multiplier. But I wish to speak this evening about a different part of this. As Mr. Chaplin also pointed out, these details are not paid for largely by taxpayers, but we should keep in mind that many details are for utility work, which we do pay for as utility customers. Other states and even some other Massachusetts communities manage to do very well with non-police flaggers, and I would much rather see Arlington move in that direction. Again, I urge a no vote and hope we bring non-police flaggers to Arlington. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Newton. Bob Jefferson. Robert Jefferson.
Bob Jefferson, Precinct Twelve.
Yes, Mr. Jefferson.
Again, I'm in support of this article. A lot of what the manager said in regards to public safety, I think, are valid points. We currently quite often unfill details because the process now is that if they can't get an Arlington police officer, they need to get officers from other communities. As a lifelong resident of the town, I would much rather see police officers out on the street, more public safety out there in the event that there is a situation. From someone who worked with those officers and worked on the street for thirty-seven years, quite often, those police officers can help out in situations. And again, I think the police chief could answer it much better than I, but I know of situations where detail officers were instrumental in assisting other officers or assisting in medical issues. And right now, if they want to talk about changing something, that's not what this article is. And when the, you know, initial speaker, Ms. Dre, spoke about marginalized communities and reducing the size of police forces, that's not what the article is. That's a debate for another day, which I completely disagree with. So I would ask that you support this article. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Jefferson. Gordon Jamison.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Gordon Jamison, Precinct Twelve. I have several questions on this article. Could we have a better idea of what the need is and the number of hours that our officers are doing additional service beyond their forty hours a week or thirty-seven and a half per officer?
Chief Flaherty, can you answer that?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Julie Flaherty, Chief of Police.
Louder, please, Ms. Flaherty.
Chief Flaherty. My question is, what's the need? Who currently?
I can't hear you, Ms. Flaherty. Yeah, we can't hear you, chief. She has a poor connection. Maybe Mr. Poehler can help us.
Mr. Moderator, this is Adam Chaplin. I can take a shot at this, if that's okay with you.
Okay. That's, yeah.
If we can get the chief back, she can certainly cite hours, on average, hours worked. I do think a valuable data point that will partially answer your question, though, Mr. Jamison, is that the details regularly go unfilled in town right now, and we often rely on police officers from other jurisdictions to have to come to town.
Thank you. Okay. We're burning my time here while we're, sorry, Mr. Chaplin.
It's okay.
Is this part of the collective bargaining agreement? Does it have to be passed or not? Yes or no?
Adam Chaplin, Town Manager. Our commitment was to bring it forward to Town Meeting.
Okay, thank you. So I still have more questions, so I'm going to keep going. So I hope the police chief will take this in the intent that it's meant. So when I go by the details in town, my recollection is they're spending more time looking at the work being done and looking at their cell phones than they are at the traffic. Granted, traffic is not always busy in some of the places where they're deployed, but I would be happier if whoever's paying for this, if they were actually doing, paying attention to traffic. I pass through Lexington regularly. They do use traffic flaggers. They have special uniforms with traffic on them. They tend to be older men and women who do that, and they do a wonderful job, and they're very attentive. That's the end of that part of my thought. Looking at the details here, no one after the age of sixty-five can do this. I do have a question about the second paragraph in Section One. Am I correct that someone could terminate from Arlington Police Department employee, go work for another department, and then come back and do this in town? I would not be in favor of that. Is that a correct interpretation of that paragraph? Second paragraph, Section One, perhaps?
Mr. Heim.
Yes.
I'm trying to make sure I understand. Doug Heim, Town Council. I'm trying to make sure.
The second sentence, Mr. Heim. Of the second paragraph in Section One.
So what that, Doug Heim, Town Council. That sentence has two clauses. They have to be a regular police officer of the town of Arlington, voluntary retired under the provisions. So they have to have served as an Arlington police officer and they have to retire. Whether or not their retirement would allow them to go work in another jurisdiction, it'd be hard for me to answer on the fly. Probably, there are probably some circumstances where that could be theoretically possible, probably fairly unlikely.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Heim. Moving on to the next page. Previous speaker spoke to the lack of training. If we, perhaps the town manager, if we don't have the chief handy, could talk to the training required for these versus regular officers, because it looks like there is a lot of training and stuff required, maybe not as much as the previous speaker might like, but there is some training. Can we speak to that? It's Section Five. Maybe Mr. Chaplin, since we don't have the chief.
Well, the chief, is Chief Flaherty got her microphone working yet?
Mr. Moderator, can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Much better.
Thank you very much. I can start from the beginning to answer some of the questions that went unanswered, if that's okay.
Quickly, Chief Flaherty, my time is burning.
Okay, so we'll, I'll start with the questions that you just asked. We would require special police officers to attend training. They are first responders, so they would be required to attend first responder training annually at their own expense, as well as CPR annually at their own expense, and firearms training. As I requested to Ms. Dre earlier in an email today, we would require them to attend any trainings that we deem necessary as part of their duties as a special police officer, and they'd be subject to the same rules, regulations, policies, and procedures of that of an active member. Where they're not subject to attend an annual in-service training, they would still be required to attend trainings that I or the town manager mandated.
Thank you. Thank you, chief. Did you have an hours, an average hours per officer for active employees?
So that varies per officer, per week, but I would say right now we're averaging about twenty details being called in a day, and we're probably filling seventy-five percent of them.
Okay. Does this count towards their retirement?
As far as hours?
Yes. Does this enhance their retirement, or is this separate from retirement wages?
It's completely separate from retirement wages.
Okay. I'm, I'm still learning more on this article. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Jamison. Mustafa Varglou.
Hello, this is Mustafa Varglou, Precinct Ten. And I think one of the things I heard, I think, twice now is that we have unfilled details, and I'd like to ask why we're not using civilians to fill those details at this time.
Chief Flaherty or Adam Chaplin, one or the other. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Julie Flaherty, Chief of Police. The Code of Massachusetts Regulations provides that civilian flaggers can only work on public and state, public, state, and municipal jobs. So there's no provision for private work at this time with civilian flaggers. They're not used usually because there's not that much of a cost savings. And as Mr. Chaplin had stated, Massachusetts is a prevailing wage state, and in most cases, flaggers are being paid close to what police officers are making. I think it was forty-six dollars an hour versus approximately fifty-one dollars an hour. And additionally, their ability to mitigate traffic is limited as compared to a police officer.
Well, I guess I would take the ten percent savings for anything that is coming out of our pocket directly or indirectly in the form of higher utility costs or other costs. So I do think that ten percent will add up over time. And as someone that's lived in other parts of the U.S. and has traveled around quite a bit, bluntly, I've seen a better and more attentive job with civilian flaggers than unfortunately I have with, and I won't say particularly Arlington or anywhere else, but in Massachusetts, it was kind of a shock to see the level of attention at traffic details compared to other places. And I would, I would rather we save our ten percent or save our money. And if we have to give police officers a raise to make up costs or make a more competitive wage package, that's fine, but I'd rather spend the money for the purpose that we want to spend it for and not indirectly. for the purpose that we want to spend it for and not indirectly sort of spread these costs out in a more opaque way. And then my experience has been that we can certainly get good quality traffic control with civilian flaggers whose one purpose is to control traffic. And I would vote, I guess, against this article. Thank you.
It's 11 o'clock. Mr. Thayer, oh, he went away. I was gonna ask...
Move to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, here we go. We have a motion to adjourn the meeting till the 30th. Ms. Brazil, do you want to second that?
Julie Brazil, Precinct 12, second.
Okay, so I have motion to terminate, the motion to adjourn until Monday the 30th. It's been seconded. Do we have any notices for reconsideration? The speaker's list will be preserved until next week, and it'll come back up in the same order that it is. So it's going to be preserved. So Ms. Barron has a point of order. And if anyone else has a motion for reconsideration on any of the articles for tonight, please raise a point of order now. Ms. Barron? Ms. Barron, did you have a point of order? There we go.
Sherry Barron, Precinct 7. I was just going to move to adjourn.
Ah, very good.
Already done.
Yep. So you can use your lower hand feature.
I don't have one.
Oh, it is, it's there. I know it is. Okay, so hearing no points of motions for reconsider, notices of reconsideration, we're going to close down the meeting for tonight. Everyone have a good Thanksgiving. We will see you a week from tonight. We did pretty good tonight. We got through a bunch of articles, but we've still got about 10 articles to go. So we probably have two more nights at this rate. So thank you all very much, and we'll see you next Monday. Thank you.